All right, I will call to order this meeting of the Olin Tangi Schools Board of Education. It is August 8th. Summer has flown by. Mr. Jenkins, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Lester.
Here.
Dr. Dabberco.
Here.
Dr. Wallach.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Ms. Schreiber.
Here.
All right, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I don't believe that we have any amendments to the agenda, so I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
All right, a discussion. In hearing none, Mr. Jenkins?
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
All right, so moving on to the Board President's report, this will be very brief, but it is our last board meeting before school starts, so we are thrilled to be welcoming all, I don't know that I have the exact number, 25,000 or so students.
Almost 25,000.
Almost 25,000 students into school next week, and of course, having the future convocation coming up, we've got the Zul and Tangi event for OEF coming up, so there's a lot of buzz that starts the school year off, and we're always so excited to have that. I think the one thing, more than anything else, about the start of school is our schools present a safe space for everyone to come in and learn and thrive and be the best people that they can be. So we are thrilled to have those students back and to be that safe space and to help them flourish and to help them grow and be the best, you know, young people and eventually the best citizens of our community as they grow up. So we are thrilled to bring them back, and with that, I think, any committee updates? I don't think we've had any since July. No, all right, good. So we will jump right into our agenda. The first thing on the agenda is the safety and security update with Mr. Swazi, and we also have some country Delaware County Sheriff's Office, so excited to have you here.
Thank you, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. With me tonight is Sheriff Balzer from the Sheriff's Department and Chief Deputy Wiseman. They'll speak right after my presentation. So just a few items to review the year with you. We got that rather large state grant. Last year, we were able to split it up over two years, so a big portion of those funds went towards upgrading our camera system to include cloud storage versus having servers. Some of the facility uses for the grant money, which we would have had to spend district funds on anyways, a new PA system at Orange Middle School. Those are not cheap. I think that's like $36,000. You'll notice at the start of school, all the buildings will have room numbers. You can see the room number from the outside of the building as well as inside, and that's coordinated with our phone system and the 911 center and the Sheriff's Department dispatch. So if a student or a teacher calls 911 from our phone system, it immediately alerts the operators to what room it is, and then we have the visible notice, and that took quite some doing, obviously, with as many schools as we have. And as you can see, we've replaced, you know, some door locks, added access control. We utilized the grant for our visitor management system as well as the training for our assessment and care teams. And again, this is a rehash. This isn't anything new. We've been doing this in the district since 2019, and I just wanted to put that up to stress that not only are we concerned about, you know, the physical safety and security, but the prevention aspect is a key for us. So if we can, obviously, prevent something from happening, that's our best course of action. It's a multi-disciplinary team. Early identification and intervention and long-term management of students that may be a threat to themselves and others is key, and we do that in conjunction with my counterparts that are also here in this room with pupil services and our student well-being folks. So something new I put on each of your desks is a little sticker, and I didn't come up with this all myself. I was fortunate in one of my trainings to meet a police chief from Springfield, Missouri. They have a very similar size school district, 24,500 students, the largest district in the state of Missouri, 3,500 staff, so a few more than us in 55 school buildings. So they came up with a program called Stop the Prop. So with their permission, the Communications Department was obviously able to put our logo on it, and we're going to be pasting them on the doors. It's not something that we do in this district anyways. After first bell, all the doors are locked to all our buildings, and visitors, students alike, have to come through the front doors. The only time we allow a propped door is if a teacher or administrator in the beginning of the day are at those large gathering areas to get all the students and staff in, but just a little sort of gimmicky thing that looks like a stop sign, and it just might remind someone to not prop the door.
Mr. Swazi?
Sir?
One point on that, especially as we, both last year and this year, have added the trailers at the schools. Can you talk a little bit about how that interplays with the safety efforts that we're doing? Obviously, we have students that are outside the main building.
Sure.
And present some special things. So I don't know, you know, both in terms of access to the buildings and, well, we've got now new trailers at the Indian Springs buildings, so parents are going to be curious about that, so.
Correct. Luckily, we've been through that last year, so there's a few things we learned in working with the facilities folks. We get the trailers as close to the buildings as possible. Actually, the Indian Springs one's going to be physically a lot closer than it was able to geographically at Cheshire. So with that comes fencing and awning, and it gets the same security as our brick and mortar buildings do. So camera system, access control, alarmed, locks and all that that go with it, to include some of the safety bollards on the outside. So it basically is an extension of the building, and it always leads to the closest door, and then we have a staff member escort the students, you know, for lunch and the restroom. So like I said, I think having done it at Cheshire and somehow that was, that structure was not affected over there by the tornadoes, but, you know, so the facilities does do a good job working with the installation folks to tie those down pretty well. That answered?
Yeah.
Any question there? Okay, and so this next piece I want to talk about, now the school resource officers, and I'll let the sheriff speak a little bit more in depth to them. They've always been mentors in the schools and give presentations. Over this winter, we got together with the folks in our instructional technology department and to just put all the heads together and try to come up with a cohesive presentation for digital citizenship lessons. Specifically, I brought in the middle school slash elementary school SROs, and David and Britt from Instructional Technology put together this pretty snazzy presentation about internet safety. And there's one specific for third, fourth, and then the fifth grade ones, since they're a little bit older, they have a separate one. But basically, it's a program that we will all use in the classrooms of how to become a responsible digital citizenship, and you could see they came up with a little police robot there. They're pretty creative folks over there in Instructional Technology. And I'll just play you one of the scenarios so you could see, obviously, you know, and I'll probably goof those up. I think that's TikTok, Snapchat, and Instagram, maybe. I'm not a social media guy. Did I get them?
You did.
So, and I had to, I told Mr. Wright, I go, you know, we've been doing these presentations or whatever, but the Instructional Technology folks, they put, what was that word called? Juge? Is that an English word? He's the English teacher, so I guess they judged it pretty good.
Someone in your school took an embarrassing photo of your friend and posted it on social media. Students in school are laughing at the photo, making comments, and reposting it.
So again, it's, you know, it's, they use some great graphics in there, and it's just a platform that could get the teacher involved, and then again, if something would involve the counselor, they'd bring the counselor in too. But just so the school resource officers, the teachers and the counselors, they're all speaking, you know, the same language and the same takeaways, and they did a fabulous job on that in Instructional Technology. What is happening in this scenario? How does it make you feel? What should you do? And again, we constantly hear not only our own stories in the district, but throughout the country that, you know, those little handheld computers that we all have, and it seems to be at a younger and younger age, the more we can get the kids educated about, the better. So that's a cool project, and that should be rolling out here within the next couple of weeks. Sorry, Sheriff, I snagged a picture of you there. To go in reverse chronology of the school year, we just finished up two weeks of Safety Town at Olin Tangi, which is always like a big hit. Even when it's raining out, these kids don't care. We bring the fire department in, they get soaking wet. They have a blast. And then I'll turn it over here shortly to the sheriff. We are up to 10 school resource officers in Olin Tangi. That's no small feat. We have a deputy assigned at every high school and middle school, and as you can see from there, the middle school SROs also have the responsibility of their specific elementary schools. And I'm going to bring that back there and bring Sheriff Balzer up unless you have any specific questions of me, or I'll just be up here with him.
Sheriff, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sheriff Jeff Balzer, and I'm happy to be here today. Thanks for inviting me. With me today is Chief Deputy Dave Wiseman. Chief Wiseman oversees our Professional Services Division, which includes our school resource officers. As Director Swazi mentioned, we have 10, I'll say 11, school resource officers for Olin Tangi. Total, we have 17 deputies who are working as school resource officers in Delaware County and two sergeants. So I count 19. That is the most of any law enforcement agency in central Ohio, maybe Ohio. I've never checked for the entire state, but certainly in central Ohio. And I think that's important because we've seen in other districts where they've pulled police officers out of the schools for various reasons. That's the exact opposite in Delaware County, where almost every year I'm asked for more school resource officers because of partnership, and I'll talk about that in a minute. I just want to congratulate you on something too. It may not have been all of you on the board at the time, but for hiring Director Swazi, you got someone who is a subject matter expert in security, retired FBI supervisor and agent, and who has those connections in law enforcement. It's invaluable. I know when I get a call, when Chief Wiseman gets a call from Joe, that it's something serious, and we're going to work on it together. So kudos to the board for continuing his employment. Little facts and figures, I mentioned about the number of SROs we have. In the school year '23 and '24, we responded to more than 600 incidents or calls for services in Olin Tangi schools, and we provided over 9,100 hours of instruction, I thought that's pretty interesting, to 19,400 students. And the topics, like Director Swazi said, go all the way from, for the young kids, bus safety, friendly sheriff, 911 safety, to internet safety, cyberbullying, gun safety, bill of rights, peer pressure, good and bad drugs, self-defense, career choices, and several others. So it's very important for our folks to be involved, not just sustaining the doors as a security officer. We appreciate that you trust us to teach those subjects. The primary mission, though, of our school resource officers is safety, to protect the students, the staff, and the visitors to the Olin Tangi schools. If you think about it, the most important asset we have in any community is our children, and that's where we have this partnership that's so important. When I talk about the partnership and trust, it's between the Board of Education and the district administration. It's between the Board of Commissioners. Commissioners have to front us that part of the money, along with the schools, in order for me to hire more deputies. And it's the parents, because if the parents didn't believe in what we're doing, they'd be in here in mass telling you too. But when I go out and talk to the community, whether it's Safety Town, and that is one of my favorite days of the year, I like to go to those graduations. I get asked all the time about the school resource officers and how people are so happy to have them here. So again, we will always work with our partners at Olin Tangi local schools and public safety to protect the students and staff and visitors down here at Olin Tangi. I just wanted to thank you all, and I'm available for any questions you have.
Questions, comments?
Comments?
Sure.
I can't thank you enough as a parent to three young kiddos in the district. What everyone in this room does is very appreciated, and I love what everyone in this room brings to this district, but our kids cannot flourish here if they're not safe. The safety of our students is paramount. There isn't anything more important than that. So we can have a top-notch curriculum, we can have the best teachers in the world, but if our kids aren't coming to school and learning in safe environments, nothing else matters. So I even, a brief story, but a million years ago in another lifetime, when I was a teacher, I once found myself in a true lockdown scenario, locked in a closet. I was a pregnant teacher, the other teacher was also pregnant. We were hiding closets with a classroom full of first graders, a true lockdown. It might have been the scariest moment of my life, and knowing that we have so many people looking out for our kids and our staff is, there isn't anything that means as much to me as this. So I'm just so appreciative to all of you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
This is the only presentation, Mr. O'Brien, where I don't ask questions, because this is an area where you do what you do better than anybody on the planet, and we don't ask questions about, what are you doing with this? What are you doing with that, obviously? But just thankfulness and gratitude. My two kids are safe every day, and it's because we have your presence in our building, so thank you.
You're welcome. And again, it's a partnership, because if we're in the buildings and yet the staff, the principals of the building, didn't believe in the mission, it'd be difficult. That's not the case. That's not the case.
And I think, I think that's an important point on the partnership between the district and the sheriff's office and between Mr. Swazi and the sheriff's office, because, you know, maybe I've been here too long, but it hasn't always been that way. And with Sheriff Barton, and obviously Sheriff Balzer, you've carried that on terrifically. That partnership is critical, and I think it's very much valued. And we are lucky to have Mr. Swazi in our team.
I was going to say, I'll echo everything that everybody has said so far, but I wanted to see if you had a little more information about, you know, there's three bullet points up there. You spoke a little bit about education, which, you know, my kids certainly come home all excited sometimes when the sheriff, Deputy Doug is who they see, so they're excited about Deputy Doug when he comes in, and obviously, the law enforcement piece. But can you talk a little bit more about the informal counseling or mentoring that might happen, you know, what sort of, what that sort of looks like in the schools and how that works to integrate, you know, the officers with the school community?
Yeah, and sometimes that's done informally, but we always tell the folks when they're doing that, because I know it happens when I talk to the SROs and the staff, we also tell them to get the guidance counselors involved, get the teachers involved too, because we want to have that partnership. So that if it's information that's concerning to a student, they bring it to us, that's great. We need to share that with the staff too, so they know what's going on as well. So.
Yeah, and sometimes it's home life matters, that they feel more comfortable talking to the SRO because maybe an incident occurred over the weekend where they interacted with law enforcement. So again, it's that multi-pronged approach. Doesn't matter if the student approaches the SRO first, the counselor, the teacher, the principal, they all share that information. And to go back to our behavioral threat assessment model, that multi-disciplinary approach, that's really what it is. It brings together the subject matter experts, whether it's the mental health professional, the counselor in the school, and then the SROs, they have their piece in that.
Yeah, I recall when I was working at the prosecutor's office, I went to the AG's safety, yeah, the law enforcement conference, and there was an FBI agent there that talked about school shootings, and she said that one of the main things that helps prevent them is having someone that they can, students can come to and talk to. So that's such an important piece, and having that trust and having all of you work together so that things don't slip through the cracks, I think, is extremely important. So I appreciate that partnership.
Thank you, and I agree with that too, and I know the school has something set up where people can report things after hours. And so I always tell our school resource officers, and I've hired or promoted a few this past year, that it's not an eight to four job or seven to three job, because often you're going to get a call at night from one of the chefs saying, hey, we've got this going on. Can you help us? And they're on their computer at home and giving us all the information, so we'll be able to address it then.
And, you know, I just want to echo, because we do appreciate that, because sometimes at 2:00 in the morning, we're having conversations with the sheriff's office and the school in partnership of something that comes across, whether it's that reporting or somebody's email or a desk, and, you know, we're up and we're working on that.
That's right.
I mean, having a trusted adult is critical, not just, I mean, obviously preventing school shootings, but to kids' mental health, period, right? If you don't feel like there's someone that cares about you that you can go to if you need help, if you need assistance, that they're there, they suffer, right? And it can result to harm to self, it can result to harm to others. It results to a lot of things. So having that, being that sort of presence where, you know, there are times where kids would not, would be afraid to come to a police officer, right? And so having that sort of relationship is critical. I think we are in such a different age from when we grew up, we have school shootings, and everybody is so, you know, terrified of that. And it can go the other way, right? It can go too far, where you feel like you're going to school in a prison, right? And we don't want to be in that situation. So the way that we have integrated this, so that kids are excited to talk to the deputies, that they do feel safe, that it is part of that community and that, you know, that they're willing to come to you as counselors, as mentors, as supports, speaks volume about the type of organization that you're running, the type of partnerships that we have, and I'm glad to see that continue. And I want to thank you just for having that, setting up that type of atmosphere within your own organization, within our organization, that we can have kids feel supported.
Thank you. Thank you again for your partnership. I really appreciate it.
Great. Well, so thank you all so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to our next presentation. You are free to go.
Thank you very much.
So we'll move on to Ms. Preston for the Bridge Ed update.
Yes. Hello, thank you so much for having me. I'm going to be going over everything that we've done Bridge Ed last year. My first year at Olin Tangi, first year in K-12, and first year for this program, so building the program. Really excited to share what we did and what we are going to be doing over the next year. And we're going to start with the why of Bridge Ed. So why are we here? Why was this position created? In October of 2023, the Ohio Department of Education added workforce. So now it's Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, which just goes to show that shift of where the importance is going, where a lot of prioritization is going to be. Additionally, there's going to be a college career workforce and military readiness to be added to the report card. They're not sure yet. It has been reported, but we need to be ready for it. So that's front of mind and definitely something that we're considering in the work that we do. We started, this program started as a pilot, so really, we're going on the third year of Bridge Ed and work-based learning, which just shows how much of a priority it is for Olin Tangi, and it's being noticed out in the community. The partners that I talk with, all of the different districts that I talk with, Olin Tangi is the star in this, is rising for this. So it's something that a lot of the other districts look to, and a lot of prioritization in the, you know, the companies don't see this with other districts. We went all summer, met in person with all of our industry partners, reviewed last year, talked about what went well, what would we like to do, and they were really happy to have those conversations and are very engaged. My first year, especially the first semester, I just listened. I went with what was already in place, what partners do we have. I probably invited myself to meetings with a lot of people sitting behind me, and so just kind of really listened to the students, counselors, teachers, and our partners to really see what the students wanted and what everybody wanted before we made any changes. The benefits of work-based learning, it's a, you know, the new buzzword that everybody's talking about, but it goes across students, teachers, and community. I'm not going to read through all those, but I just want to give a really good example of something that we're doing this fall that really hits all three buckets. So Brent wore in our instructional technology, when he found out what I was doing, kind of who I'm working with, came and sat in my office. It was like, this is what the students want. They want real-life experiences. They want to figure out in the classroom, what can I do in the classroom that's going to affect real life out in the world? So we kind of thought about it and had ideas bouncing around for a couple of months, and then reached out to our partner, Robertson Construction. We went onsite to Peach Bowl Crossing and made a video when it was still kind of in the construction phase, and came up with five design challenges for their eighth-grade students that in the fall, they're going to figure out like, hey, here's the cafeteria. How would you make this more eco-friendly? Here's a classroom. So it's actually going to be part of the digital innovation elective in eighth grade. So it's again, taking that real world with our partner. So the video just came out. We're going to review it with them tomorrow. We're very excited. I can't see which of the five, I can't wait to see which one they pick and what they come up with, and Robertson then is going to come back and help us give feedback and kind of go through and pick like the top five. So that's really exciting. It's something that hits all three of these buckets, and really, with the chef's kisses and what we want to do with our programs here. Want to talk about, a little bit about our partners. So like I said, I kind of went with the existing partners that we had already established over the year, really great partners, but strategically thinking for the next few years, how are we going to determine who our next partners are? So I love data. We took, we're taking, you know, data from a few different points to kind of cross-connect and see who our next partners are going to be. One of the first data sets that we looked at was School Links, and then we looked at grade nine through 12, 5,900 responses, and this is kind of their top-tier areas of interest. And I always love the professional athlete in here. So if anybody knows an industry partner athlete that I can connect with, let me know. I'd love to do that.
That's different than what we hear from our boosters.
So taking the School Links data, the Ohio Top Jobs list, so this is available online, and I love just sorting it different ways and taking a look at it, but for this specific purpose, I looked at it by growth. And you can see like the top are a lot of medical, a lot of construction, a lot of trades with the growth, especially here in Ohio. And then I wanted to take a look at not just Ohio, but what are the top growing fields in the United States. And I did look up what a wind turbine service technician is. It is a tech that services windmills. So that was the number one growth. So that is, you can get a tech degree in that in 30 weeks, and also the average salary is $87,000, so not a bad little gig. But you can see there's nurse practitioners. But you can see there's nurse practitioners, the, a lot of IT, more, a lot in the medical field. So I took that data, School Links, Ohio Top Jobs, US Top Jobs, and our partners, to kind of see how we were aligned, and if we were on point. Everything that's highlighted in blue is all the medical field, so you can see we're very strongly connected, we're we're just, that's where we want to be. When we have the, all the columns aligned with our industry partners, then we know that that's really a good choice, and that's supporting all of our initiatives. And it also can help guide who our partners are going to be going forward. Additionally, and you know, not just looking at the data as far as what the specific roles are in the industries, I like to ask our partners, what can you just do to support all of our students, going back to our mission? I want to make sure that our students and pupil services, our English learners, everyone is supported through our industry partners. So that's always a question that I'm asking, and what would really make me determine who will our next community partners are going to be. So this is what we did last year, and we had 51 events connected with about 2,900 students, parents, community, and teachers, about 6,500 interactions, which was, which was a pretty good, pretty good touch point for the year. What do those entail? Convocation, classroom presentations, job shadowing, our state of the workforce events, teacher externships, clear, career exploration, internships, experiences, and think tank. So that's kind of what we went with, that's a lot of things that we have planned for next year, too. Here's the breakdown by school, have the high schools, Oasis, Berlin, and then some of the elementary schools. It's very right now heavy-centric with the high schools, trickling down to the middle schools rightfully so, but in the strategic plan, three, five, 10 years, this is a K-12, this is a K-12 program. The goal is so that when our counselors are having their one-on-ones with juniors and seniors, this is not going to be the first time they've heard of Elford Construction. They will remember, in third grade, I had touch a truck, and then in middle school, they flew the drones. So that's kind of where this alignment is, and what makes an, a Bridge Ed partner. We certainly don't want to discourage, you know, class, the teachers inviting parents to come and speak, you know, for a classroom presentation, that's great, I don't need to know about that, but the Bridge Ed partnership are, is the long-term, and the internships, and you know, the job shadowing all the time. This is the breakdown by partner, and I kind of want to emphasize on this that it's it's quality and not quantity, sometimes, when you look at things that have happened with our partners. An example is Ascensure, three events, 43 people, but last spring was the first time that our students were offered to apply for a capstone project, where they worked one-on-one with software engineers, after-hours, developed software, had a showcase, so that was nine students. So to me, the quality of that engagement is is really important compared to like a state, a, you know, theater full of 300 people. Not that both aren't, have relevance, but I don't want to discount the number of people if it's smaller, that it wasn't a good interaction. So here's our partners. We've had really great exchanges, and a lot of great work with each one of those. Nationwide Children's is a little bit newer, but for the first time, one of our Oasis students was accepted into their summer job program this summer, so that was, that was really exciting. Really, I mean, I can't say enough, I'd be here a long time, and these people would, might not be happy with me, but I could talk a lot about a lot of the interactions, and we'll do some highlights here. Here are some of the top highlights that I put together, I'll go through them really quickly, because I think they're all really pretty great. Forge Biologics had their first-ever high school intern ever, from the Olentangie Academy. They also conducted a DNA science project for 300 students at Shanhead Middle School. Worthington Steel, they've never had a high school IT intern. So last spring, they hosted, from Orange High School, their first-ever IT intern, he knocked it out of the park, he was invited for the second part of the semester. So he set the bar here, and they're coming back to us saying, we're ready to have more Olentangie interns, because they know the quality of the students that they're getting. Manufacturing Day, we had students from Oasis go to Manufacturing Day at Worthington, that's the first Friday of every October. Ascensure, there's the nine students that participated in the Spring Capstone Project that developed software and all things IT that I can't even, I can't even explain trying, I mean, you were there.
I was there, I could explain.
Let's see, JP Morgan Chase, Olentangie is approved, we are going to be finalizing legal documents this fall for them to host and hire interns for graduating seniors. Next summer, we're going into software development and IT. So we're going to start with two and three students, they only do this for two other districts. So this is really exciting, they're going to be making $32 an hour, too, so which is like crazy. So we're very excited about this opportunity. So next summer, 2025, we're going to have, we're going to be able to have two to three interns, they're going to pilot that with us. Additionally, they have a very amazing autism-at-work program. So this fall, they're going to start, some of their employees are going to be volunteering to be mentors for pupil services, so we're going to connect those students with a mentor from JP Morgan Chase to come onsite. They have internship programs for for people with autism, so this is the pathway leading to some of our students getting an internship next summer, which gives me goosebumps. We had very strong support from our industry partners with letters of support for the CTE Equipment Grant that we were awarded for $2.4 million. They, we were supposed to, the requirement was two, and we had 10. And so when we were awarded that, many of them came back to us and said, we want to be at the table, we want to help you with curriculum, with this equipment grant. So that was amazing. KSM Sports Internships for Students with Disabilities. The Ohio Department of Education and Workforce had their first-ever in-demand jobs week in May, and we participated with Intel, which hosted a webinar with Olentangie Schools, and we had about 50 to 60 participants, which was awesome. Very big highlight for me was our trip to Intel this year, so we were one of three districts that were invited to go out to Chandler, Arizona. And Dr. Blackley and I went, and it was, it was very, it was amazing, it wasn't just for fluff, it wasn't a PR, it was very immersive into the two different career paths at Intel, the two-year tech, the four-year engineer, and I've connected with them after. So the engineer and the sustainability lead would like to connect with us and virtually lead classroom presentations this fall, which is amazing, so I'm already working with the STEM, and then the AP Environmental Science teacher, so that Intel can lead classroom presentations virtually, so that's really exciting. Wexner, 47 students participated in Allied Health Week last spring, and what that was from STEM Academy, they were fully immersed for four days, one day in surge tech, one day in respiratory therapy, lab, and something, there were four. So they were able to spend time, and again, this goes back to work-based learning, to feed, to the awareness piece of it. They might know they want to do medical, but not sure what, I'm not sure I want to be a doctor, but the respiratory therapy is so high in demand, and so it's, and it's a two-year certification from Columbus State. Additionally, they learned that if you go to the, the Wexner Medical Center, day one, if you start working right away, tuition is paid for. So that's pretty awesome. Nationwide Children's Hospital, we had the one student employed for their summer job. Ohio Health had a summer camp at Riverside Hospital, they had over 90 applicants, 24 positions, and 16 were Olentangie students. So they were able to participate in that summer camp, which was pretty awesome. Think Tank, I had a partner discussion with Robertson Construction, Intel, and Forge. We're really working with initiatives for EL students, we had a teacher externship to Elford Construction, so teachers went onsite and brought that back to the classroom. And then the high school tech internship program, we worked with Bridge Ed and the ESC, we had 20 total Olentangie students participate, 16 were working for Olentangie as IT interns. And I believe, Mr. Meyer, you have additional information later you're going to be sharing on that, on another slide or no?
I do have a slide with the 16, yeah.
Okay, cool. And just to add to that, too, we found out that the ESC was going to, they have a pilot that they're work in conjunction with this IT tech internship, that if the students that are participating take an online class in addition, they pass this test, we'll get reimbursed up to $1,250 per passed test. So we have four students that are taking the class right now. So that's pretty cool. And we're moving, it's stuck. I think I, I think I spoke too much. I know, it's too much, it's very heavy. It's frozen. Any questions?
There we go.
Yay! So here's some photo highlights, the top right is, are the students that went to the Manufacturing Day, and I'll just highlight the bottom, because this was one of my, this is my favorite trajectories. So this was the Elford teacher externship, we're on the left, teachers were onsite at Elford, learning about the different career paths and what they do. Then we went onsite to an actual construction site, and then they brought it back to the classroom. So kind of full circle moment of how the teach, the teacher externships. Next year, we are looking, we just kind of applied an overall 3% growth on interactions, and like I said, it really is more about the quality than the quantity, but I did put an asterisk that the parent bucket is one that we definitely want to put more effort into engaging, as we know, we know, and that students know their, of the different pathways, but there's just such a stigma at times that this, this four-year degree is the only choice, and that's what you're doing, and we hear otherwise from the students and from our partners, that there are many different ways to get to careers within the industry other than a four-year degree. Okay, so what's happening this year? Wednesday, October 16th, so last year, we did four separate state of the workforce, the year prior, we did the first, we did one single event. This year, we're going back to a single event, and we're calling it Bridging the Future. And we've invited Lieutenant Governor John Houstad to give opening remarks, so I'm still working with his team to check his availability, but the way that we're, it's going to look is that we're going to have presentation from 7:00 to 7:30, and then from 7:30 to 8:30, our partners are invited to showcase their industry. So right now, we've got seven partners confirmed, Ohio Wexner, they're bringing respiratory machines and all of the equipment, so that people, when they go, they can really get immersed and really check it out, like Elford is going to bring VR goggles, so it's going to be a really cool immersive experience. Teachers, counselors, parents, students, all are invited to learn about the, really the state of the workforce, what's happening in Ohio, and what Olentangie is doing to to support that. After that, so the way that we're looking at it, the way the strategy is this year is we're starting with the big event, and we're looking at it like a funnel. So then after the big event, because I always like to say, well, what's next? I don't want people just to come and then just go, and like, what's next? So then in November, at each of the high schools, we're going to have, the industry partners have a community aware, a career awareness fair, so that they can go and really get engaged specifically. Then if there's students from that point, so if there's 30 students at Olentangie High School that are like, really want to connect with Elford, in the spring, we will do individual classroom presentations, and we'll collect that data, knowing who specifically wanted more information from a specific partner, do a classroom presentation, and then of those 30 students, if five are, you know, after all these touches, they're still in, that's when we'll work with Elford to do onsite job shadowing and more specific experiences, but really trying to drill down to be strategic with who we're creating these experiences for, to make sure that they're, you know, a meaningful experience on both sides. In addition to all this, I lead the Business Advisory Council. So that, we meet, we met three times last year, we're meeting four times quarterly this year. We are going to be putting together our initiatives for the year, submitting a plan for the award with the state for our Business Advisory Council next May. So that'll be really exciting to see, you can get up to four stars, you know, I have no doubt that that's going to, that's, that's, that'll be where we land, but we'll do that next spring after the council, and I believe they'll start in September. Bridge Ed Partners, we will work with that in conjunction with the pathway audit that we're working with the ESC on, too, to see where the partners can bring up that curriculum and support that. And then we're also working on redoing the Bridge Ed section of the website. Does anyone have any questions? It's a lot. So I wanted to wait before it starts. So the next thing I want to show you is a video that we put together from the, the Worthington intern, first-ever IT intern that Worthington ever had, and it really encompasses really what we're trying to do. We have the teacher, the mentor, the company, and the student focusing on why this was important, and it was how mutually beneficial this was.
Students are able to get hands-on learning and opportunities in different fields that they might be interested in. Also, students don't always know which field they should pursue in college, and they might have three to four interests. And so allowing them opportunities outside of the classroom to learn from professionals, network with professionals, and be more independent is really paramount to their education.
I feel like it's a good thing for me and other students to explore their fields, so they can see if that's actually something they want to do.
We've got lots of projects and things that our teams may not have time or resources for, and students are really able to help with those, so it's a win-win on both sides.
Being able to get your hands on some of the workforce, and actually getting comfortable with what you would be doing, and getting that experience.
I ran into a lot of issues throughout my project, and even though it took me like three months to do it, I kind of like learned a lot along the way. So problem solving is definitely like one of the biggest takeaways from this project.
He was really excited to learn more, so just wanting to get in there, didn't hesitate to, to try new things, and to fail on some things, and succeeding a lot, kind of keep being innovative.
They also learned time management skills, other communication skills.
Computer science, it's all about coding and all that, but a lot of people don't understand that, meeting new people such as you guys and the other people, Worthington Steel also kind of enlightened my experience.
We're able to get students out and kind of broaden their perspective and see what's out there, they're able to make a better choice.
Having met people and companies who are willing to work with our students, we can show them how great our district is and our, our programs.
This is like an opportunity I got, I could pave my own pathway and see what I want to do after high school, so yeah.
So yeah. And the cool thing about Semay is that I'm still in contact with him, even though he just graduated and is not even in college, he's looking for internships for next summer already. So I took his resume and forwarded it to Ascensure and JP Morgan Chase, and that's, that's kind of how this works, two full circles, once you stay connected. We always want to be a resource for alum as well, and I've connected with some of our alum that went through the Advanced Manufacturing Program at Columbus State, and now, or you know, I, working IT and cybersecurity at 22 full-paying jobs with no debt, and they're very happy and want to come back and engage with our students. So I think those are all, all great stories to talk about. And again, this, this right here is where we want to land, on the repeat events that, you know, that we can look forward to have hosting every year, and that when students are in fifth grade, they'll know, I want to go to Manufacturing Day, when I, my brother went, and I can't wait to go. So we, again, will be doing Manufacturing Day this year with Worthington Steel, and also including Honda on that, so that's going to be great. The Spring Capstone Project with Ascensure, we received a lot of positive feedback on that, so they want to do that with Olentangie every single spring, which is amazing. The Allied Health Week, we're going to do every spring, JP Morgan Chase, we're going to pilot it, and hopefully that's going to be something that we can have available every summer and grow that. The Ohio Health Summer Camp, and the Nationwide Children's Summer Camp experiences, and I hope that list, this list grows. So these are the things that are on repeat, really excited about that. So yeah, busy year ahead.
Great, thanks so much. So comments, questions?
That's fantastic.
Yeah, can't wait to see the growth of the program, yeah.
But the one thing that, a couple of years ago, I went to that state of the work, the Central Ohio Workforce Event, and one of the things that stuck out to me from hearing all the hiring managers is, you know, talking about how they just were seeing the, the lack of fit with the workforce, with the work that's out there, right? It's, you know, we're hiring, you know, somebody who got you know, somebody who got an English degree to do something that isn't an English degree, and, you know, they're, they're great, and I say this as an English major, nothing wrong with English degrees, right? But, but it, it's, it just wasn't that link up, right? So a lot of this work to get people to understand what those pathways are so that they can then, if they do go to college, if it is a college, you know, field, that they can have that link up. I'm a little bit curious about how, how close that partnership is, if there is a higher ed thing, or if there is a trade certification, or whatever that may be. How are we linking up with those advanced educational opportunities so that there is that sort of soft handoff, right? Like how, because I think that it's, it's one thing to put them in touch with the employers, but before they get to the employer, there's education, right? For some of them, not for everything. So it may be, I don't know the full extent to what we do there, but there may be an opportunity for growth if we don't to, to sort of increase that so that there's an even smoother path.
Yeah, I agree with that, too. And we have got a partnership, you know, with Dave Hofer over, who is my role over at Columbus State, and we are continuing, especially with the Intel Partnership, to have those conversations of what that one-year certification looks like, and not just telling them what to do, but how to get there, like you said. Great point.
But no, this is amazing. I mean, it really amazing. And when you think back to like, again, when we were kids, the difference is mind-blowing, mind-blowing.
We had, you know, I was at FST, I was able to participate in the Columbus Chamber of Commerce. They did a whole week of just, we got to go to all these companies, so I have a whole new group that I'm reaching out to. But I did ask one of the FST, she was at Logistics, and she wanted to be a physical therapist, and she's like, I went to college and realized I don't like chemistry. And I said, well, what could have happened in your high school experience? So we're starting to really ask our partners, what does your day look like? And ask the students, what do you like to do all day? So when we were at Intel, I, we asked that of the engineer, like, what did you like to do? She says, I was the fixer in the family. The refrigerator was broken, it wasn't my dad, it was me. And, you know, I love putting IKEA furniture together. So really connecting with students too about what they like to do versus, you know, anything else really could help lead that path as well.
I wasn't aware there were people that liked putting IKEA furniture together.
She does. She does. She, she really does, and we all kind of had the same, we had the same reaction. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Meyer.
All right. Thank you, Molly. That was really good. And really, you can see, we're just scratching the surface. So a lot of opportunity here, opportunities that we can provide for staff, for students, and for sure, our community partners. So thank you for the amazing work that you do, and looking forward to next year. All right, so I know, I think I've told you at least once, twice, maybe three times, the start of the school year is my favorite part of the school year. So with that, want to recognize some things that we as a district, and in particular, our curriculum team has done this last week, actually. So as you know, we host New Teacher Academy every year. So this year, we welcomed 170 new administrators and teachers for three days of relationship building and really acclimating our new teachers and administrators to our culture of learning. So one thing that we're very intentional and purposeful on our why, and our why, for sure, is our students and our fundamental purpose is learning. So great three days, which then culminated with our Elevate event of professional learning. So we had over 300 Olentangie staff members attend 40 breakout sessions, and then want to highlight the keynote speaker, Will Richardson, on teaching and learning in a fast-changing world. So we just heard a little bit about that. So in education, it's a lot different from when we were in school. And we, as an organization, have to be agile in order to meet the needs and the demands of our students. So just some feedback. So we do get feedback from pretty much everything we do. So on a scale of one to five, the average experience rating was 4.53. 95% of participants were extremely satisfied and somewhat satisfied with the event. 100% of New Teacher Academy participants reported that they strongly agree or somewhat agree that they are proud to tell people where they work. And that's real important. And I remember, so last year, one of my best questions, first year superintendent, what makes you proud to, to work in Olentangie? And it's just amazing, the pride that we have in this district from our employees. So that starts right from the beginning with our new teachers. And then 100% of New Teacher Academy participants reported that their initial experiences working in Olentangie met or exceeded their expectations. So again, I just, I want to emphasize that because we try to do a really good job of making big feel small and really, again, being intentional on acclimating our new teachers to the district. So with that, the beginning of the school, all district administrators, we have, we held our kickoff on July 29th. So we had an Olympic-themed day of professional learning focused on leadership journeys and individual leadership development goals. I had the honor of welcoming back all of our bus drivers. They were in a good mood on August 1st, so we're going to, we're going to try to keep them in a good mood through the entire year. But welcome them back for their annual in-service day. And then on July 30th, got to meet, had the opportunity to meet with all of our intervention aides. And this is an improvement for the district. Last year was our first year that we held intervention aid training, and that was feedback from current intervention aides that we have in the organization that they thought it would be critical for us to provide that initial training for our new intervention aides that we onboard. So we did that on July 30th. Also want to emphasize this because the learning just doesn't happen with new staff. Dr. Blackley, I think it was maybe June or July, gave a presentation to the board on our strategic plan and things that we're looking at as far as evaluating the work that we do around continuous improvement and creating measures within our strategic plan. So that work continues across our district. And again, in a large organization, very intentional about the alignment. So Dr. Blackley held meetings with building administrators in June. She also conducted an Elevate presentation to over 40 staff members during Elevate. And then this week, presentations to all building leadership teams. Again, you can see connecting building and classrooms to district goals, because it's important in an organization our size relative to alignment. And that alignment needs to be systemic, K-12, vertical, and horizontal. So her and her curriculum team in the office doing a lot of work with our administrators and obviously staff. And I really just want to emphasize those last two bullets under the goals there. Understand how the collective efforts, the collective efforts and individual contributions of each staff member and department support our broader educational objectives and shared mission to facilitate maximum learning for every student. So again, very intentional on that work from a district perspective, all the way down to the classroom level. And then, again, helping for us, helping to understand how we can support the organization, creating conditions within our schools and within our departments, especially with the curriculum, with, with all of our teams, but the academic team on how we can help support the work, the important work that our, our staff does every day. Okay. Here, so Molly mentioned this, so we want, there's a picture of the 16 Olentangie students who participated in the Ohio High School Tech Internship Program, and really, our technology department with the, the scope of work that they did over the summer, we really rely on these summer interns. And they're all either, most are high school graduates or in college, in college, students in college, who help in our technology department over the summer with our technology needs. So there are the 16 that participated in that Bridge Ed program. Also want to highlight, this is fun. So last week, Olentangie hosted the United Way of Delaware County Supplies for Scholars Drive, right here in this room. So for me to walk down here and you just basically see the expressions and the smiles on the students' and the parents' faces when they come in, and again, they grab a bookbag and they walk around and get all of their school supplies. So this year, 400 Delaware County students, and these are students from all over Delaware County, were here and were able to pick up their supplies. So just a, just a, you know, very, very great day. Want to highlight, so internal processes. So as you know, we often receive the Top Workplace Award. So 18, 20, 22, and 24, we've only applied for that, we do it every other year, so don't, so there's not really a gap, but when we apply for it, we've received it. But I want to highlight that second bullet because this is something that we don't apply for. This is just something that's recognized through what we do in the organization. So this year, we were just awarded Forbes Best Employer for Women for 2024. And that, what that entails, they look at women that we have in leadership positions in the organization, opportunities available for women in the organization, and obviously, the benefits that we as an organization provide. So again, proud of that. And you can see Forbes Best in-State Employer, and I put that up there because I'm foreshadowing an announcement that's going to happen for '24, but I really technically can't say it, but, all right.
Mr. Meyer, comments will be stricken from the record.
That's right. That's right. That's right. Wink, wink. Superintendent action items tonight. So we have three administrators I'm recommending for employment. Assistant Principal at Liberty High School, Erin Harper, Elise Ross, Assistant Principal at Olentangie High School, and then Dr. Chris Sander, who is being recommended as Assistant Director, Secondary Curriculum, who will be leaving Liberty High School, and then we're recommending her in that position. Then three, you can see three retirements up there, and then we have declared transportation impractical, and then we're recommending, this is an annual action item, we're recommending bus route, transportation routes, and stops for the 24, 25 school year, but also authorizing Director Carter Evans to make changes to routes when necessary through the year. And then we just have some tech, we have a technical changer with those next three bullets with, from Assistant Director to allowing our Director of Business and Management, as well as our Chief Operations Officer, to be able to make those decisions for purchasing. And then we have a project agreement up there with Liberty Township with easement, and this is, again, where the site for Elementary 18 will be on Bean Holler. We're going to do some widening of some roadway work up there. So we're asking the board to approve that 200,000, the amount not to exceed $200,000.
And just to be clear on that, Mr. Meyer, obviously, the levy didn't pass, we're not constructing a school right now, but there's benefits to being able to do this work that's going to have to be done, no matter what, doing it now versus waiting until later.
Absolutely. And we had this budgeted, but it's, it's better to do the work now because it's going to be cheaper to do it now than it will be in the leader, or than it will be later. All right. So as you know, I'm sure, I'm sure you probably got some messages about Power School open today, August 8th. It's always, again, one of our best days.
I was able to get on 8:30 this morning.
Best, best days of the year. So Power School is open, and we do appreciate patience from the community because everybody's in Power School. So when everybody's in Power School, it, it goes a little slower. So, but overall, the team did a good job with that. Grand opening Peachbloom, of Peachbloom Crossing Elementary this Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00. First day for certified staff Monday, and then Elementary Open House, as you can see Tuesday, August 13th. Staff convocation, again, the August 14th at Berlin High School, starting real early in the morning at 7:30. And then the first day of school next week, Thursday, August 15th. And then we are highlighting Parent Technology Support Night, which will be two locations, Orange Middle School on the east side of the district and that Liberty Middle School on the west side of the district on Tuesday, August 20th at 6:30 PM. So that's always very, very well attended as well. And then our next meeting, Board of Education regular meeting, will be Thursday, August 22nd, right here, so.
Questions? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Jenkins.
Thanks, board members. I'm going to invite Bethany Lenko to join me here at the podium because we have a couple of updates to provide.
No snacks. I'm sorry. I did pass out. So I did do that yesterday.
So Mr. Meyer noted that Power School opened today, and we are pleased to announce something that is a little bit different this year with Power School. It began with conversations that Bethany and I and Madison Ratliff, our Assistant Treasurer, started having back in probably February. And I'll let Bethany talk a little bit about food service, but ultimately, what is seen here on the screen can be expanded to all of our fees that we process through Power School.
So what we were discussing is an additional way for parents to pay online that didn't have a transaction fee. So back in...
It was February.
Yeah. So we reached out to Rycor, who does all of our online payments, and they were able to offer us the ability to, to start taking an E-check, an electronic check, from parents at no fee to parents. Which is great for parents to be able to pay online, but not have to pay for a fee. And from a food, food service perspective, we will still obviously take cash and check at the cashier stand. We are still taking credit cards, so American Express, Discover, Visa, MasterCard. But there will be a new fee structure for any credit card that is taken online. So you can see the new fees that are there. So Visa and MasterCard are 30 cents per transaction plus 2.9% of the total in the cart. Discover and American Express are 30 cents per transaction and then 3.5%. And those are the direct fees that we are being charged by Rycor for using those credit cards. So we're not charging more, we're not charging less. It's exactly what we are being charged by Rycor Payment Solutions. Another thing that parents have been requesting is to save payment options. So in the past, you had to go in every time, put in your new, put in your credit card information. This way, now you can either save your credit card and/or your E-check account, so you're routing your account number. So those will be saved in Rycor Payment Solution, in Rycor and Power School for parents. So they do not have to get out their credit card every time they want to put a payment onto their lunch card.
I have a...
Didn't miss anything.
Couple of questions or comments, I suppose. So this payment structure for the credit cards is a change from, it was a flat fee, right, of 250? And I, I would encourage some really good communication to parents about this because I remember when it changed from no fee to the flat fee every transaction, and I know a lot of people's behavior changed as a result of that. I know I, for example, started putting a lot more at once on my kid's account, so I wouldn't have to pay 250 over and over again. And this would kind of discourage that behavior because it's a percentage of what you're paying, and obviously make the, the free or no transaction fee option well publicized to the parents as well, so that we know that there's an option now that is not going to incur these fees.
We put those out today. So we have communicated them in the school news today. We highlighted...
We did it a couple of times.
Noted, but we led with, and that's what, that's what we're here to celebrate, is we led with, there is a free option. I will repeat that. So I understand that some parents, you know, might not necessarily like or feel like the, the fee going to the Visa and MasterCard and American Express and Discover, but that was why we specifically created a E-check that is a much lower transactional fee, but it's not free. I believe it's 1% with a 30-cent transaction fee, and as a district, we are covering that. So I hear you, and I hear that members of our community, you know, might feel a little bit dismayed that a fee structure is changing. At the end of the day, these fees aren't arbitrary or capricious. They are fees that are being charged to us by the payment processor, and I don't know how else to say it other than...
There's no way to get away from those, working with nonprofits and trying to...
There is a free option. Yeah. So I, you know, if, if a parent were to call me tomorrow... There is a free option. Yeah. So I, you know, if a parent were to call me tomorrow, I've run through my head, and they say, "What are you doing raising the fees?" I would say, "There's a free option now." The other concern we had is, do you have to save that payment method? You do not have to. If you choose to, is it secure? So most of us probably are aware now that credit cards and most e-payment solutions use what's called a token. A token means that the vendor is not going to store anything about your transaction, neither your credit card nor your bank account. They create, for lack of a better word, this thing called a token that is stored, but the next time you go in and utilize that saved token, when it talks to the bank, that's, who knows, your routing number or your account number. So yeah, we will continue to make sure that parents realize. To me, the big news of this slide is we now have a completely fee-free option, and this isn't just food service. Any fee we take as a district, whether it's participation fees, curricular fees, if it's in Power School, it can be paid without any service fees.
And I just want to underscore that this isn't the result of a law changing, that we have to do this, right?
Correct.
This is something that we as a district are choosing to do, and it's part of one of our many, many commitments to saving money for the community.
What some people maybe are conflating, because the laws move so fast, the, I believe it was House Bill 4, just flew out of my head. There was a House Bill that was pushed through right at the end of June that said that for athletic events or school events, you can't charge a different price at the door than what you charge online. So if you're charging 10 bucks at the door, you have to charge $10 online. But the law also very specifically says that you can, if you still have an online option, you can still assess fees, because obviously, as the entity that is housing that particular site, none of those companies do that for free. So when someone goes online this fall to an athletic event, they will note that the price at the door is the same as the price online, although the price online will include those convenience fees. And what was mentioned earlier by Ms. Lenko is very important. Anybody who wants to pay cash or check for any school fee, and they don't even want to go on the computer, that is absolutely still an option. We take check, we take cash. You do not have to do an online transaction if you don't want to.
Yeah, I think that's great, and I'm glad to see it. It's just, I can already hear people saying, "What? What happened? I didn't know," you know?
And I was talking about...
Despite however many communications we've put out.
I saw the communication go out via social media, and I've already seen confusion, people not necessarily understanding the difference between the e-check and a, and a credit card payment. So we may even need to build a little education in explaining the difference between the two, and what it, what it means to pay via e-check.
I went through it this morning. I paid my fees this morning.
Did you use an e-check?
I used e-check. It worked perfectly. It was great. And I appreciate that. This is much more consistent with a typical retail experience, in terms of options and fees for credit cards. I'll be honest, 250 flat fee was a mistake, and I'm glad you addressed it. So I think this is fantastic.
Well, and on that communication, there was a step sheet for parents, that parents can follow on how to apply funds to accounts, because sometimes that does get a little tricky for, especially new parents, when they've maybe never gone into Power School and, you know, lived in field, what it looks like in there.
Do we, having done it this morning, does it say on there, this option's free, this option costs?
Yes. It has a box that says, "Save or Not Save."
Yeah.
And actually, what was, it should too, it did tell you, here's your fees. If you choose the credit card fee, here's the fee you're going to pay.
Correct. And you'd have to sign off.
It tells you before you even do it.
Yeah.
Because mine was like, $7.84. So by saving the fee, or by using the e-check, I saved $7.84.
That's a great point that Mr. O'Brien brought up. Before someone even went through with paying a fee that they felt like had changed, it tells them, and then you can clearly see that the e-check option was free. So, you know, I appreciate the experience, and it can be confusing and daunting, but everything about it, hopefully, we've, we've thought through to make it as clear as possible. But we'll, we'll continue to promote it.
From your check?
Probably.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Bethany.
You're welcome.
Despite the lack of snacks, that was a great presentation.
We gave you food for thought.
Yes.
[laughing]
So what I wanted to do was to take some time to briefly update the board and the community on where we ended the fiscal year at June 30th of 2024, compared to what I would call the final iteration of our five-year forecast. I like to say that if you, when people ask me how accurate I am on a five-year forecast, I'll tell them, "Are you talking to me in August, or are you talking to me on June 30th?" So by the time I get to June 30th, I will be 100% accurate. So what I wanted to show today was where we recently stood when we adopted the five-year forecast in May. As you all know, we readopted it. And where we actually ended with cash performance. So first of all, actual revenues were $6 million higher than our forecasted amounts. In just a minute, I'll kind of show you what those key pieces were. Our expenditures were $2.33 million lower than our final forecasted amounts. So it's kind of reverse thinking. A positive variance, a positive number on revenue is good. A negative number on expenses is good, because what that's meaning is, is your revenue was higher, and since the number is negative, your expenses were lower. So these two numbers actually add together in absolute value, meaning that our actual revenues, being $6 million higher, and expenses $2.3 million, $2.33 million lower, means that our budget surplus increased by 8.33 million, on top of what was already forecasted at about $8 million. If you put those two numbers together, we were originally thinking that our revenues would exceed our expenditures by about $8 million, and ultimately ended up at 16.8 million. Questions so far? Here are the components. So the main parts of our revenue variance, which remember were positive, these were more than what we were expecting, is we received about a $1 million supplement from Ohio Department of Education in late April, and it was to buy high-quality instructional materials. You can see it was about $999,000. Further, I chased interest all year. What do I mean by chased interest? Well, I continued to increase our interest estimates because we were supposed to, in theory, potentially by now have a Fed rate cut or two. Didn't happen. So interest rates being high on the investment side is a good thing. So ultimately, by the end of the year, I still had a $1.4 million adjustment that would have caused part of that variance. And then I wasn't necessarily expecting, so thank you to Liberty, to get our insurance claim dollars early. And they would have paid about $3.3 million in insurance claim dollars from the March 14th storm. Now, on the flip side of that, part of the expense variance is going to be something that happens. I was planning on the expenses, because oftentimes with insurance, you get started, you spend, and then they pay you back. So part of what we see in the positive expenditure variance, even though the number is negative, is I had estimates on some purchase services and some capital outlay that ultimately I think we'll spend this year. But for last year, it allowed us to spend a little bit less than what was anticipated. Does that make sense, that, that point I'm making? And then our expenditures for personnel, again, that, that seems like a sizable chunk of money. I'd love to, to have those two numbers combined, but that is less than, you know, half a percent on our total salaries and benefits, but still, we came in lower than projections. And then finally, the negative expenditure variance, which these are the things that the numbers positive, which means we spent more than what we thought we were going to in a particular area. We had a, if you remember, we had a curricular math adoption, so we had a pretty significant increase in supplies, because that's where those come from. And then ultimately, you can also see that our other objects, other objects are where we pay a pretty significant chunk of our ESC bill for our related service personnel in special education. Those types of services would have increased a little more rapidly than what we had originally planned. If you put the pieces, parts together, on the left-hand side of the graph, we started at the same point. The blue line shows where we thought we would end up with a 204, sorry, $196 million balance, which would have been, as we noted earlier, roughly an $8 million surplus. But instead, for the fiscal year, we ended at 204, roughly $0.8 million, which is a 16.8 million dollar increase. And so our day's cash right now is about 216.82 days.
So you planned for eight, and got eight more, so you got 16.
That's correct. Questions on just sort of a very brief overview of how we finished the year compared to what we were thinking budget-wise as recently as end of May, beginning of June?
Is it usually 1% to 2% better, give or take?
Potentially, yeah.
I mean, it's never, I'm just trying to put this in the context of other years.
So the forecast tends to get better, because I would rather be standing here talking to you about the forecast getting 16.8 million better than to tell you it got 16.8 million worse. I'd have to do a little bit of research to see just what the magnitude is. I mean, we, we felt like the year was going to have a positive, you know, revenue exceeding expenses. We made some adjustments at the end of the year, long-range, because of the levy not passing. We got some news late that our insurance estimates for health care were going to be lower than what we anticipated, so a lot of that gets factored in. But ultimately, I'm going to estimate expenses, as hopefully you would expect, a little conservatively higher, and revenues conservatively lower, because this is a much more, much more pleasing experience than to explain. Now, I don't want that number to ever be so absurd that someone could accuse us of being so conservative that you can't trust the numbers. But 16.8 million budget surplus on a $350 million budget, or viewed differently, our carryover increasing by an additional 8 million on $350 million, is quite literally a miniscule in scale type of estimate error.
It's probably better than average. It wasn't like a home run, but it's nice.
Correct. It, I thought about having this presentation or not, knowing that some folks might see this and say, "Oh, wait a minute, you know, your carryover increased from 8 to 16 million." Be totally transparent with what happened, and explain where the variances are.
And you're saying some of that 8 is already accounted for, it just was a timing thing?
Correct. Yeah, some of the, some of the revenue, about $3.3 million in insurance proceeds that we were paid very, very quickly by Liberty, and then some of the expenses are lagging that. So those are going to hit ostensibly this fiscal year. That's correct. Interest projections are such that, you know, you continue to have interest rates be higher, maybe than what you're anticipating. But the, the final thing is, is with that roughly additional 8 million, we know we have things we have to discuss, that as, you know, Mr. Gordon and I were just talking this week, we have our bond proceeds that are dwindling as we have finished up principally at Peach Bowl Crossing. And recall, when we pass a bond issue, we use it to do some other projects, but one of the chief things that we do is buy buses. So we've already taken that $8 million, and we've already committed it to capital dollars that we know we're going to have to spend, again, because our building proceeds from our sale of our bonds, and then with our permanent improvement levy not passing, we have to commit those dollars to being sure that we get some of the needed capital expenses in order to operate effectively. So it's good news, for reasons maybe that we weren't expecting, that we can cover some of those shortfalls that we know are going to happen in our capital projects because of the PI levy failing, and because we are spending what's remaining of our bond proceeds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So then the action items that I have would be the July 11th meeting minutes, the donations that you see, a lot of camps wrapping up, still occurring, Martha Holden Jennings Classroom Award, Fanning &amp; Howey and Robertson Construction each year, when a building is complete, are generous. Those $1,000 there are going to be split between the '07 and '18 fund at Peach Bowl Crossing. So would have talked to Ms. Dryjack this week about how she kind of wanted that done. One of the most riveting things is every year, we have to submit the report of how we invested in commercial paper in the district. We don't do banker's acceptances. It's legal, but all of our investments are commercial paper. And then finally, the June 2024 financial report, which has a lot of the highlights that you just would have seen in my section of the presentation. Those will all be presented to you as normal, as a part of a consent calendar. And at this point in time, I don't have any public participation.
Alright, yeah, alright.
Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins.
Alright, we will now move on to the Treasurer Consent Action Items. Mr. Jenkins, if you'd like to present those.
So as noted, Board Members, I'm asking for your approval by one single motion and vote. Item A, which is the July 11th minutes, Item B, which are the noted donations, Item C, the commercial paper report, and then Item D, the June financial report. That is, unless you would like to take any item and pull it out for a separate vote.
Would anyone like to pull this out? Read the commercial paper report.
Okay.
Hearing no interest, I will take a motion to approve all of those together.
So moved.
Second. Oh heck, I'll second it.
He never seconded.
I know. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none. Mr. Jenkins.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes. Alright, Mr. Meyer, will you present the Superintendent Consent Action Items?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lester. Board Members, I recommend approval of the following Superintendent Consent Action Items. A through G, Specific Human Resource Items Administrative. B, Specific Human Resource Items Certified. C, Specific Human Resource Items Classified. D, Specific Human Resource Items Supplemental. E, Approval of Senior for Early Graduation. F, Approval of Student Overnight Out-of-State Field Trips. And G, Approval of Business Management Facility Items. I'm asking you to approve these items by one single action and vote, unless you'd like to discuss any of these items separately.
They would like to discuss these separately. Alright, hearing none. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
The only discussion I'll note is, if you, if, if anybody out at home is looking at board docs at these, we made a change this meeting, so that now, instead of having to click on each individual attachment to see all of the personnel items, it's now just fully visible. So it's much easier to tell all of the items that we're doing. Again, this is just part of our commitment to transparency, and to make it a lot easier. So...
And let me just add, because as you mentioned it, the collaboration between the Treasurer's Department and our HR Department did a lot of work on that template, creating those templates to make it more transparent.
Yeah, that's great. So great work. Thanks so much. Alright, Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Alright, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Alright, we are adjourned.
Thank you.